Okay, let's try this again. It's 5:30, so I'm gonna call the May 16th meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Uh, can we do roll call?
Mr. Gerard.
Here, thank you.
Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Mr. Giller. Uh, Mr. Lees.
Here.
Ms. Proper.
Here.
Mr. Gara.
Here.
And Ms. Gort.
Here.
Anybody have anything to add or comments about the minutes? Okay. I do. This is not a new comment for me, but the abbreviation of the minutes. I want to bring that up again. Last time when we talked about the thermal solar, I probably talked for between 12 and 8 minutes. And I got three sentences in the minutes. Three sentences. Ethan had some very important things to add. And he got very little too.
I think we've talked before, we do not provide verbatim responses or summaries of what's said at the meetings. We try to capture the essence of it. In that particular case, I actually went back and looked at. So I wanted to make sure we captured your guys' comments. And I think we did fairly and is pretty much exactly what you said that was in the minutes. You should take a look at the.
I don't agree with that. Um, I don't feel that 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 was a representation of what I had to say. Or was it a representation of what Ethan said on what I think is an important topic?
So if there's some suggestions you have on things that you think were left out, if you want to let us know what those are right now, we'll be glad to add those to the minutes, assuming the rest of the commission agrees.
Okay. I'm going to defer not to do that simply because I was not prepared to to have this discussion. But again, I feel at times that it it's diminishing to us on the panel and the time that we put in when what we said doesn't seem to be taken into account. And that's my opinion. So, um, I guess we'll move to approve the minutes soon.
Uh, Mark, I I did notice that it was abbreviated. And I thought about it and our our conversation was really more about the technical aspects of 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 solar hot water systems, correct? And I'm I guess I didn't think too much about it, whether or not that was appropriate to to be in here or not. I I do, I do get your point though, and 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 certainly noticed that the abbreviation and so.
So Chris, do we vote to approve the minutes or can I just say the minutes are approved?
You can say they're approved.
The minutes are approved. Any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes this evening.
Okay. Um, as part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open up the meeting to any public comment. And if you're attending by phone, press star nine on your phone and then star six to unmute yourself. Any public comments? Anybody on the phone?
We do have participants, but no hands raised.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. And I believe the first thing on the consent calendar is the Soul Center.
Oh, what about the, are we going to talk about the preliminary hearing first?
Mister, yes.
Uh, Mark, if I may, uh, I just would like to add here again. Disclose that two of the the items on the agenda today, the applicant is Suzanne Allen Gara, my my ex-wife and former business partner. However, I have no financial interest in the first project, although I do in the Staples and I will be recusing myself from the Staples. And unless anybody would like me to recuse from the other one.
Anybody have a problem with Ethan sitting for this particular preliminary? You can stay.
We're glad for that. All right. We'll start now with the preliminary hearing for 114 South Main Street. Let me just make sure that Alan, you can see the shared screen because it's not coming up as with the typical like shared indicator for me, so.
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay, great. Well, with that, we will jump right in here to. So I'm Planner Two, Sarah Crump, for the record, for the town. Tonight is the preliminary hearing for 114 South Main Street redevelopment. This is located at lot 14 of the Bartlett and Shock subdivision within the commercial core character area, number six of the downtown Historic District. It's also located in Land Use District 19 on the Land Use District map. The proposal tonight is for a two-story retail and food and beverage commercial space with an additional rooftop exterior retail food and beverage venue of approximately 5,640 square feet and the additional deck of 1,270 square feet. I'm going to quickly go over to the existing site conditions for you to see. The existing building at 114 South Main Street is a one-story commercial food and beverage and retail establishment. This was constructed in approximately 1940, but it's been remodeled and added to and reconfigured many times over the decades with the most recent remodel occurring in 2016. At this time during Planning Commission and staff review, it was determined that this building existing is not historic. I apologize for scrolling, but the number keys are not available in this version of Adobe, so. Zoom in view here. Again, this is a two-story design with the first floor being proposed as retail. The second floor, retail and food and beverage, and then the exterior deck on the open flat roof at the top. And this proposal does exhibit the typical design details of a commercial storefront in the Breckenridge Commercial Core, which is described in section 4.3 of the Handbook of Design Standards. So you can see here, they've proposed a steel kick plate Main Street level pedestrian windows at the pedestrian level, full full windows, a recessed entry for from the Main Street level. Transom windows above and a nice belt course here, the proposed of painted wood siding. In the second level, also painted wood siding with the typical less solid-to-void ratio of the second story. And then a proposed cornice and parapet setback from the Main Street. So Steph has reviewed this proposal against the design standards of the handbook as well as the design standards for the character area number six. We find that this proposal does meet priority design standards number 218 and 220. These require windows on the first floor level and a consistent pedestrian storefront level that that's consistent with the historic Main Street. And also the clear distinction between the first and second floor. Move right on to building form. So Design Standards 211 and 212 discuss building form and require forms similar to those found historically in the area. And to keep forms simple, rectangular, parallel to the street with components in scale with those found historically. So we'll first kind of discuss this in 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 different pieces. We find that the parapet proposed cornice and then the flat roof behind do meet standards 211 and 212. And then the flat roof has even though the 212 says gable roof forms are preferred, there is precedent in the Historic District for the flat roof behind the parapet. You can see this at 103 North Main Street at the Gold Pants Saloon as well as several other historic buildings. Regarding the proposed rooftop deck, there is no historic standard that specifically talks about an exterior rooftop deck, but there is precedent for this as outlined in your staff report for several instances in the Historic District. And because it is recessed from the front and the parapet will conceal visitors and patrons, staff doesn't find a conflict with the historic guidelines regarding the rooftop deck. However, I do want to discuss the rear proposed elevator shaft and stairwell. This does not necessarily meet the established precedent within the Historic District. Staff considers this to fail priority policies 211 and 212. And this Historic District doesn't currently feature any buildings that have such a proposed protruding elevator shaft or stair tower. And this roof penetration does not follow the simple roof form that's prescribed within the Handbook of Design Standards. Further, it doesn't meet a design standard 219, which requires that rear alley rear buildings in the rear step down towards the alley. This is also a priority design standard. And if you look from the front, this proposed stair tower actually sits five feet, three inches above the height of the front cornice. So as viewed from the pedestrian level in the street, this would be kind of sticking out among the other historic buildings in the district. There's past precedent for this determination that these do not meet the design standard 211 and 212. That was seen during the proposal for 112 South Main Street, just one lot to the north. This was the proposal for the new RMU location. Previous determinations by staff in preliminary meetings with them determined that a rear elevator shaft would not meet these design standards, and so their final approved version of design was actually an exterior lift without a penetrate, a tower that penetrates the roof line. This is shown in your staff report. Before we leave the discussion of height, I do want to talk about Policies 6A and 6R. These policies describe height within the Historic District. And so not only is height discussed in the Historic District Design Guidelines, but it's also in the Development Code. The Development Code recommends a height of 25 feet for this portion of Main Street between Lincoln and Washington. And then the, there's a little bit of a discrepancy here because the suggested height for the Land Use District is 26 feet. But then the Handbook of Design Standards says 30 feet is okay for this commercial core area. So noting that discrepancy, the height of the proposed front cornice on this proposal, if you sort of for a moment discount the rear elevator shaft and stair tower and just think about the front parapet and cornice, it's going to sit at 27 feet high. Sorry, I'm scrolling to get back to the page. So you can see it in context next to the building to the south, which is historic in the building to the north. Okay, here we go. I'll zoom out a little bit so you can. So this cornice is proposed at 27 feet, which is about a foot or half a foot below the historic building to the south parapet and approximately the same distance from the building to the north parapet. The building to the north is not historic, but we do think that it takes in the historic design standards fairly well and demonstrates like a good example of a product that would be standard in the district. So with that said, and noting this discrepancy, we do have a question for the commission tonight. If if you are not considering the height of the rear stair tower and you just look at the front, would this two-foot-over height, would you consider waving points for this because the Development Code requires negative two points, but we do think that it meets Design Standards 81 and 83 for the Historic District, which require height to be similar to those found historically and maintain the alignment that's created by nearby heights of primary roofs. So we think that this proposal does meet those standards. It just doesn't meet the Development Codes. We have that question for you of whether you would consider waving those points. Moving away from height and back to building materials, the Design Standard 225 states that there should be a balance of building materials maintained found in the core commercial area. This project proposes four-inch lap siding that's painted. And then around the rear, you can see they have a brick proposed base. Masonry stone or brick may also be considered as an accent material. This is part of Design Standard 225. So staff believes that this development does comply. Regarding windows, Priority Design Standard 95 says that the proportions of window and door openings should be similar to historic buildings in the area. And then we also have Design Standard 223 that says, maintain the pattern created by upper story windows. This proposal has a nice balance of the upper story windows with the below windows. Again, these are pedestrian oriented at the commercial level. And then the solid-to-void ratio of the upper story windows is reduced. This shape of window also complies with the Design Standards for the Historic District. There are a few examples of a frame shape with this point at the top with throughout the district. Again, I'm going to go back to the Gold Plains Saloon because they have the same window frame design. The frames here are cedar proposed and then with some steel bracket details at the top. Staff believes that the window proposed design does comply. Regarding ornament and detail, Design Standard 228 says that detail will reinforce the established pedestrian character of the area. So this building does propose quite a bit of steel trim and accent both within the cornice and then bracketry along the belt band and then the steel panels at the kick plate. There is precedent for this amount of steel and metal as accent detailing. You can look to 112 Lincoln Avenue as the most recent example. This is the Blue Fish Building and there are quite a bit of the similar metal accent details found in that development. The mixture of wood elements and the modern steel accents staff believes actually meets the established form of the Historic District, but does differentiate the building as a modern and new construction. So it's not going to be confused with something that was not originally part of the district. But it does blend in nicely and meets the form requirements. But we have that question for the commission as well. Do you agree with our assessment that this level of cornice ornamentation and detail that is made of steel, does that comply with Design Standard 228? And then finally, the dealing with the design standards in the Historic Guidebook, the site plan, so I'll move on to the site plan. Zero setbacks on the northwest and north, north and west sides are proposed. This aligns with the historic Main Street form, building placement. There is a three and nine-inch side setback to the south. This small passageway would be for drainage. It wouldn't be a pedestrian passageway, but it would expose the rock wall that's on the existing historic building to the south. This was the Finding Hardware Store originally. So that would be something exposed that's new. The current existing building actually is attached to that wall and is not currently exposed. And then I think an approximately 40-foot setback in the rear will allow them to have their required, most of their required parking on the site. The amount of landscaping is typical of the Historic District. They're going to retain the existing plantings, I think a couple of street trees in the front and but very minimal landscape in the front as is noted in the design handbook. And then some additional screening trees and plantings in the rear for parking and to screen the rear patio. We already discussed height. I'm going to skip over the policies where staff had no concerns. And we, sure. Absolutely. So density and intensity, this is consistent with the one-to-one floor ratio on the site. We also have, we don't believe that seven R or eight R apply in this instance because it is an already developed lot with no significant natural features. A placement of structures I just discussed pretty much with the site plan in in conjunction with the Design Standard number eight. It adequately meets snow removal and stove storage requirements. Refuse is going to be consistent with the existing trash enclosure that's located across the alley and that's under Policy 15R. Access and circulation, this site is accessed from the rear alley, Ridge Street Alley. And then of course pedestrian access in the front. There, and then so that brings me to, let's see, open space doesn't apply because of the core commercial area. I talked about landscaping. Adequate drainage will be provided on site through the French drain to the south in this passageway. That's Policy 7A and 720, sorry, 27A and 27R. And then, so I'm back to parking. Does that cover everything? Okay. Yes, yes, we're not, no concerns from staff on siding issues. The required parking because of the amount of retail, food and beverage and exterior food and beverage space is equal to 10.7 parking spaces. Eight parking spaces are proposed in the rear off the alley as shown here. And so that would require 2.7 spaces to be provided through purchase in the parking service area through the fee and loop program. And then under Energy Conservation, Policy 33R, this proposal would include three EV chargers to be installed at the rear parking area. And that would gain a positive three points. And then they are also proposing 310 square feet of heated patio, which would equal negative one point. I want to pull up the site plan. I think it's on this. And the heated patio is here. Correct on the second level? It's hard to read. I'm not sure if it's the step-down area or the oh, here we go. Okay, so 310 square feet of heated patio in this step-down area on the lower level. So to summarize the negative points and positive points that we've discussed, the height under Policy 6R does not meet the recommended 25 feet in the area. It is two feet above at 27 feet. So that warrants negative two points as written under the Development Code. And then Policy 33R, negative one point for the 310 square feet of heated proposed paving. And then again, under Policy 33R, positive three points for providing the three EV chargers. At this time, the proposal does fail Priority Design Standards 211, 212 and 219 for the proposed elevator extension and stair tower that does not conform in staff's opinion to the historic roof line within the district. So we do have a few questions for the commission tonight, but I'm available to take any questions. Should you have any as well? Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Sarah, could you go back to the picture of the front of the building? Yeah, that's a good one. Thank you. I'm looking at Design Standard 226, which says that buildings in this area must use muted colors. And also Design Standard 227, which directs that buildings coordinate their color schemes with other schemes on the block.
Okay.
And I'm looking at the vertical elements and and the white going across. There was nothing on that block with vertical elements that extended to the second floor. And nothing that had such a stark distinction between the background color colors of the building and these white elements. And in my mind, they are out of character with the other commercial buildings in the block. All of them, if they have vertical elements, they're darker or muted colors that blended with the other colors of the building. And this to me is very prominent. And I think you know, to me, sets it apart very strongly and does not blend into the adjoining properties.
So you're speaking specifically about the the vertical wood paint?
Yes.
That kind of divides it into quadrants?
Yes, I would not have a problem if they were painted a darker color, either the gray or the the browns to blend in more, but I don't think that they are consistent with Design Standard 226 and 227.
Okay, I'm gonna let.
Excuse me, Susan, we're in the question phase. I I think what might be more appropriate would be to ask of staff how the design does or does not. You can, you can explain, like, ask if because of those elements. You can, you can explain like, ask if because of those elements. If it complies with the design standards signing before actually stating it, you don't believe that it complies. I I think that. One of the issues, you know, if you're looking at this is. I think they're trying to make a rendering, it's accurate and maybe. In some ways reflects the three dimensional nature of it and has things stand out. I mean, there's, there's ample. Examples of white being an accent color even on historic buildings, if you look directly to the south. Both the window frames and a lot of the detailing is in a white. And it's used throughout the historic district. So I I think. In terms of if if that were a question of staff, we would say that the white. Is not an issue as it relates to using muted muted colors, the the building to the. To the north is predominantly white. And the existing building is actually a fairly bright purple with white accent. So there's, there's ample precedent. That, you know, I I think a white and a gray building would would definitely meet the muted. Criteria within design standard two twenty six.
Well, I don't know, I. I take your point, I understand. And I did look at the existing building and it is, it does have a lot of weight around the windows and so forth, although the. The background is purple, but. My concern was that. The contrast. Between these vertical, these white elements, you know, just taking them all together. As opposed to, you know, say the upper story of the building to the north or the trim around the buildings to the south. Was much more prominent and to me did not describe something. That would qualify as muted or consistent. With the scheme in other buildings in the area.
So my question has to do with the windows on the first level. And I guess the handbook. Four point three, the kick plate. And then also corresponding to two twenty five where it talks about. Maintaining the present balance of building materials in the area. I feel like those windows look like my office building in Alexandria, Virginia, which maybe that's fine, but. How do you guys equate that to match the historical look?
So are you referring to the transom windows or the?
The aluminum clad first level storefront windows.
So the amount of glazing probably is a bit more than a typical historic building. We don't necessarily have a distinct number for the amount of glazing, it's is the kind of. Feel consistent and the level consistent with the pedestrian moving through the historic district space. As far as whether it meets two twenty five. I think the majority of the materials as far the. Siding being four inch clapboard siding. And the proposed brick on the rear do meet the policy two twenty five. But if if the amount of glazing is something that you're concerned about, then that could be a comment.
I just think it'd be nice to have them be wood and maybe a little less glazing and a little more in line with. With the drawing in four point three handbook.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question as it pertains to the stair slash elevator tower and wondering why. Directly across the street, the Georgian Square has a stair tower that is prominent front and center. On the street and it was not included in past precedents and wondering why.
Can I just, which building are you?
The Georgian Square Building, which is directly across the street. There you go, there it is.
So it wasn't included in past precedent because this was not built to our design standards handbook. And it was, I think it was constructed before the design standards were implemented. It would not pass approval today, basically. It's nonconforming, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alan, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Yes, I have one question. For the required employee housing. The applicants getting credit for existing for the exist, the number of employees that were. A housing provided by the existing use. I just want to confirm that the previous tenant RMU did not get the credit for that same amount when they moved next door.
I don't think that's the case, but I could confirm that I they wouldn't have gotten credit on a different lot location.
Okay, so okay, the idea, I just want to confirm it.
Yeah, I can confirm that Alan that, yeah, we similar to like water piffs and parking, we cannot, it cannot be transferred from property to property. So with RMU's new programming on their site to the north, they had to comply at the time that they they came in and made modifications to that building.
Okay, good, thanks. That's all I got.
Thank you, Sarah. It's a very good thorough report. So. I'm just thinking. About the use of this building and the existing RMU building next door. And this sort of doesn't. I don't think it's in our our ballpark, but is there anything that's going to prevent these two buildings from being used together? Like, once you're through the front doors. They're sistered up side to side. Can you just cut a big door inside and put these two buildings together as one big building for use purposes?
So I want to be clear that the applicant is the owner of the existing building. That's not RMU, it's a different owner entirely, so this proposal is completely separate from. Anything that RMU has going on or or proposed next door. I, we, as far as a connection through buildings, I'm not aware of a policy that would prohibit that. And since it's not historic, the building to the north, I don't think we would prohibit that. But they're not proposed to be connected and I don't think they could be as far as the rooftop. That probably wouldn't meet building codes to go between the two in any way.
Maybe just one other point of clarification, when the applicants originally brought this in, if I'm not mistaken. The building was more centered, so there is like a couple feet on either side, we asked them to. Move it to the north or one way or the other, so there was more more of an opening that could people could move through on one side.
The other thing, when I believe the building to the north was originally for sale prior to RMU purchasing it, there were other. Interested parties and. One of the things I think it would prevent what your. Your your question from happening is actually liquor licensing laws. And there are some areas where they can have. I think it's called the entertainment district, they use it like around the ballpark and other areas in Denver. But that's something that I think local or local, the local liquor licensing authority has control over. And at this time, it's the purview of the town to not issue any kind of entertainment district. Liquor licenses where people can kind of go from entity to entity. And so. I I think that would probably be something that really would preclude them from. Kind of joining or having people going back and forth. I mean, there's always a bit of risk when you have two liquor license established establishments where they essentially have an outdoor area that bought stellar one there. There's several of those instances in Lasima Mall, but it is always. I I guess it's something that has to be policed by the entities themselves, and there are fairly severe consequences if there are people that are going. You know, outside of the designated liquor license zone where the beverage is purchased. And so it's, it's definitely in the interest of those entities to police it because I know. You know, someone just walks off, it's a pretty heavy fine for some of the walk off the patio and. You know, even out onto the sidewalk or in in those instances. In in terms of if you could combine lots and have the same business occupy both buildings, that's something that I guess we would have to look into. There might be standards that say that technically we don't, that the building then would exceed the module size or something like that. You know, it might be beyond what we can answer on the floor at this time.
So do we understand that there is one owner of the real estate? That's involved in this building and another owner. RMU owns the building to the north, is that correct?
That that's correct, yeah, and and maybe the owner when they have a chance to present can speak to this, but my understanding now is that RMU. Is in a lease for the existing building, it is there. They had purchased the building to the north in the middle of that lease with full intention of moving completely over to that building. And then I believe that the, I'm not sure what the intention of when. If this building were constructed, you know, who the tenant would be ultimately, but I think that's something that the applicants maybe could describe a little bit in their presentation.
Do we know anything about the status of RMU completing their rooftop area?
Yeah, I I can speak to that, they are, I I think they're planning on. Trying to get a CO this summer, I know we had some questions about the specking recently of the elevator where they have that on the order. And. But in terms of the the progress, I I'm not sure if it's they're shooting for like early summer, midsummer, but I think it's. The intention is it will be completed in the operation this summer.
So they were able to meet the engineering standards for the.
They are, yeah, I mean, they've been, you know, working extensively throughout the process with the building department.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
So now I'm confused. The. Project that we looked at before with the rooftop deck, that is not on this building, it's on the north building. And they're proceeding with that, so there's going to be two rooftop decks, is that what what I'm hearing?
That's correct, yeah, if this, the building to the north, the white. Building with the blue trim is the the building that in the summer of twenty twenty one. The planning commission approved the rooftop deck. The construction of that deck is now underway with the anticipated completion of sometime this summer. The building presented tonight. Would be a completely new building to this block of Main Street with also having a rooftop deck, it just happens to be next door to the. The the rooftop deck that was previously approved on an existing building.
And there's no communication between the two decks unless somebody jumps over the parapet wall.
Correct, they have setbacks on, both decks have significant setbacks between them and they're sunken. So or I think the RMU one is sunken and then there's a significant distance between.
Say sunken, it's it's at a different elevation.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I think that. There's always the possibility, I mean, you look at how bars operate, there's always going to people be people that jump off the dredge into the pond and. So. I I think as it's designed and what the intent of probably both operators is to keep their patrons. On their side of the deck unless they go down to street level and go into the other building. You know, and legally access it that way. As it pertains to, I mean, again, there's, there's always the possibility of that, but in terms of how it relates to our design standards and even our building codes. I don't think there's anything that we really can regulate. You know, the two of them having decks next door to one another. It's in in that sense, it's probably better that. That buildings are attached versus having people that are tempted to jump if it was, you know, setback, five feet, eight, eight feet or or so, so.
Chair, if I could, one other point of clarification I wanted to make, just just for the record, Sarah touched on, and that's the. The historic issue, obviously, as Sarah mentioned, it was built in nineteen forty, which is still our. Within our period of significance, however, it's been altered so much over the years with entirely covered the original historic. Fabric and the building itself, and then in addition to the south, there was a cultural resource survey that we had. Conducted for this building a number of years ago, Carl McWilliams, who does the studies throughout the historic district, and he's determined that it's. Non-contributing to the district. And then I think as Sarah's report indicates. That back in two thousand and sixteen, this commission and staff came to that same conclusion.
Thank you, Mark. Sarah, if you're finished with your. We can ask the applicant if they have anything to present. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, yes, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Nice presentation, Sarah. Just a few small questions. One is. There's a lot of steel up high. And on the other examples, wasn't the steel painted rather than oil pan or unfinished?
Yeah, I think the example on one twelve Lincoln is a matte black painted steel. That was the example that I had most recently.
Okay, and then a small clarification on the window. I thought I heard you say a bracket, a steel bracket at the top of the second story windows. Though when I look at the perspective rendering that calls out the materials, it appears that the second. Four second story windows are completely surrounded in cedar, though with heavy bolts.
That may be the case, I I thought it was. Cedar with the bracket at the top, but I could be wrong, I'll have the applicant clarify for that.
And then there's an elevator, a four foot by four foot elevator, which raises. Sort of code and occupancy issues. It wouldn't need ADA. And are we allowing a rooftop here that doesn't meet ADA, AAS code requirements? And I realize this is planning code, not building code, not accessibility code, but. Would we allow a rooftop that's in a brand new building that's not accessible?
I don't think that we would, a building code would require an accessible. Most likely some type of elevator lift to.
Sometimes there's occupancy thresholds and sometimes there's similar uses, but. It's something we should verify. And if so, it would require that that elevator tower be just slightly longer. But not necessarily tall.
Mike, I do think in this discussion in RMU, there was some discussion about if the same exact. Offerings were made on two different floors. Essentially, that there could be some exception to that. Now, there may be some, like you said, some occupancy limits that are tied with that too, but there may be some wiggle room there in the code.
Understood, and and we should certainly understand that, especially since this is a brand new building.
Yeah, I I think the follow up and I think it. You know, with RMU, they they worked pretty extensively at the building department ahead of time, just to. Ensure, since we don't require building code compliance necessarily at development permit level, but. There's a bit of risk if you go and get it approved and then you'd have to tweak it and there's only a path forward with where you can't. Or would go against or handbook of design standards, it's probably in the best interest to make sure they have those conversations and do a little preliminary. Outreach to the building department, make sure they're they're comfortable.
Well stated, I agree. And then on the windows, sort of to Elaine's point, do we know what those, it's a lot of glass on the ground floor and four bays together. But do we know what those volumes are? On the ground floor and four bays together, but do we know what those are?
The this part here, yeah. I think it's aluminum. Let the applicant clarify.
No further questions, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, Mark.
Did you have any additional question?
Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
I don't think you might. No, the microphone is not on. And Mike, Mike, I don't think your microphone's on either. Yeah. Or you have to get a little closer to it.
So regarding the elevator size, you know, these drawings are very schematic. And obviously, we have to meet ADA and certainly that elevator will need to be five feet in one dimension. So, yeah. But good catch, because our stairs currently wrap around it, so thank you. So regarding Susan's comment about the vertical trim. One thing we were trying to do with this building is the lot width is quite different from your typical lot width. So if we looked at the straight on view that we had that elevation. We would see that. The building next door, you you can kind of see that historical rhythm, this is not. This isn't on that historical, doesn't have that historical rhythm, so what we were trying to do is break it down into more into smaller pieces that. Maybe visually related more to. The verticality of some of the the other buildings in the historic district and especially in the one hundred block. And maybe we weren't successful, Susan, so you know, your comments are well taken, maybe we need to. Eliminate a couple of them and keep one, I don't know, we'll look at it further, but thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Regarding the glazing, one weird thing, if you could pull up that elevation, that would be awesome, the one that we were. Just kind of staring at, well, this is actually perfect, too, if you look at that, so look at the the two buildings. On each side, the north and south buildings, you will see there are steps getting up into them. And I'm not sure what happened with Main Street here, but I think maybe Main Street was more of at a slope at one point or something happened. And so the glazing doesn't necessarily necessarily align perfectly at the base. But if you'll pull up the straight on elevation. We were trying to align that upper glazing with the building to the south. So you can see the upper point of the transom aligns perfectly with the transom to the right. Not necessarily perfectly with the transoms to the left, which is the north. But also had these buildings, if their foundations came down to the street. I think you would see, like, if we measured. Those kickplates, my guesses were awfully close in size to those. So I think the reason this reads as a lot more glazing is because of those weird steps up into those. Main floors. If that makes sense. So just a little side comment there, I wasn't meaning to talk about that, but since people brought it up, I thought I would. Anyway, so to start with, thank you, Sarah Crump and Chris Kulik and also Julia, who. Houston, who have assisted us with this project for literally years. We're finally here in front of you, we've been speaking to Chris and Julia and their dialogue as well as Sarah's. And suggestions have helped us get to this point. Our client, Mr. Stuart Ratson, is here tonight, he's the owner of the property and. Eve Mary Mariato, an architect in my office, is also here, he's been working hard on this project. First, I'd like to address the steel cornice and detailing regarding design standard two twenty eight concerning the steel cornice. Bracketry bracketry and architectural detailing, we are of the opinion that the steel cornice and the minor steel detailing. Differentiates one fourteen South Main from the truly historical buildings in the one hundred block of South Main. While maintaining the historical vocabulary as required by the guidelines. Some of the other projects in this vicinity that have similar steel detailing include, as Sarah mentioned, the Blue Fish sushi restaurant. That John Gunson designed so eloquently at one twelve Lincoln. And also the goat, which is kind of directly across the street at one seventeen South Main. Which Tom Bagley developed a few years ago and has a lot of detail steel detailing, and I'd say it's more than this building. We have worked with staff to reduce a large percentage of the steel detailing we originally had on the building. And the remaining steel detailing is very similar to those two projects I just mentioned. Regarding building height, we followed policy six absolute building height and land district use nineteen. While noting the discrepancies in building height in some other codes. And in that policy, it's thirty feet high, we're currently twenty seven feet above Main Street with our parapet. We originally aligned that parapet, the lower section of the parapet. With the buildings on the side, so we were originally a couple feet higher, we were two feet higher, we were at twenty nine feet. But when we came and talked to the town staff, they said, no, 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 you gotta lower that thing, we gotta have a passing point analysis. And personally, I think it should be higher, I think it should align, I think the cornice should align, I think it would look much better. But that's my opinion, and I think it's fine this way, but I think it would be better if it was about two feet higher. Regarding the alley view from the top of the asphalt, so if we go to maybe Eve's. Well, actually, let's talk about, yeah, let's look at Eve's renderings, do you have those, did he send those to you? Okay, so this is one here, yeah, and and ignore the color, but basically what we did was we used Google Earth and we have have it about. Human height and we're looking at that building and you can't even see. The stair tower, which is sixty four feet back from the face of the building, so in elevation, when you're looking straight on at the building. You obviously you see the the stair tower in the back. But when you're looking at the building from either the west side or the east side on the street. On the sidewalk, you are not seeing that at all, like, it's. Not visible to you, now, if you're up on Eric's deck. On top of his building, yeah, you could see it, no problem, but but from the street pedestrian level, it's not visible. Now, obviously, if you click through. From the back, you see it. From the alley, oh, that was so, let's talk about that just for a second, so. So some of these, this is a picture on page eight. Of the. Design, what what page is that, picture of the page eight of the design standards for the historic district. And as an example of how buildings should step down toward the alley. And what you're seeing there are two full stories. Facing the alley and then some step down buildings in front of them, right? We have a unique situation here, we have an alley that is nine feet above Main Street. So Main Street's here, the alley's nine feet above, it's almost a full story above. So basically, our lowest level is gone, you wouldn't see it here, it would be like those front buildings would be mostly buried, except for the gable peak would be sticking out. So so basically, the situation is quite different from. I think what the design guidelines were talking about when they were stating, you know, this needs a step down in the back. Also, if you click forward. We added a shed roof off of one of the porches in the back to kind of step the building down. To sort of a one story elevation back there. From the stair tower and our stair tower. Has a seven foot six inch plate, which pretty much is the minimum we could get away with per code. So we we squished that as much as we possibly could, just as an FYI, it's not like we have a ten foot ceiling in that stair tower. At the top. Let's see. So this creates a situation where a two story building is perceived as being much smaller from the alley, so our two story building gets smaller as it. You know, goes back because the grade is coming up. And then the stair tower is not visible at all for pedestrians from either side of Main Street. And. Thus, for both of those reasons, our team believes priority design standard two nineteen cannot apply to this project. But that's that's our opinion, one other option we do have with the stair tower is to potentially put a shed roof on it. Which. Which would make one side higher, but would also lower the other side, so. That's that's an option as well. But thank you for your time, and I think Stuart would like to speak as well.
Excuse me, thank you Suzanne, and it's great to meet every one of you, my name is Stuart Ratson, as Suzanne said. And I am not. The only owner of our of the RMU building, and I'm also not the owner of RMU. We are three couples, I want you to know a little bit about who we are. We are three couples from Miami, husbands and wives, five of the six of us are either doctors or lawyers. Three of us are attorneys, two of us are physicians, orthopedic surgeon, interventional radiologist, a criminal defense lawyer, a civil trial lawyer, and a real estate lawyer. We've been coming to Breckenridge, at least my family owning property in Breckenridge now. Twenty five years. Essentially raised our children here on the ski slopes and in the rivers and campsites and so on, we love Breckenridge for the same reason that I think all of you do. The other two couples, the same thing, they've been here, coming here and owning property here for seventeen years. And our intention here and our relationship with RMU has been fantastic, seven years already, we've. Had them as a tenant, they've been incredibly loyal and honorable tenant, we've been great to each other during the doldrums of COVID, we gave them complete rent relief. It's just been a win win relationship with them, but. I have no intention or to my partners of creating a doorway from one building to the other, I I can't speak to what. RMU's intentions are in that regard, but as long as we're the owners of the property, they're they're also legal liability issues that would pertain to us, I can speak to you that as a attorney. We we have our own building, they have their building and they're separate. As it relates to what our intentions or what we're trying to accomplish here. The RMU building was a dump. It was prior to RMU, it was Canary and a closed mine, I don't know if y'all remembered that, and we joke around that. Me and my my the male friends in the group, that it would be cheaper and better for us to invest in owning the property. And getting rid of Canary and closed mine than to have our wives continue to shop there. But that's a whole nother story, the. The intention that we have in seriousness here is that it's been a great privilege. An honor to be owners of a property, of a commercial business in Breckenridge, Colorado. But we look at it too as a responsibility, we we have such great love for this town and connections to the town, and what we want. Here, like like what RMU had done to that property, they made it an iconic place for their business. And it's sort of an iconic place on Main Street, when I meet people from all over the country or the world even, and they. We talk about Breckenridge and I tell them that I'm an investor in RMU, they know exactly what I'm talking about right away. And it's a it's a well known property and landmark for people and to their credit, the owners of. The the business have come to you and they've made improvements with the beer garden and the front deck and it's just been a really vibrant and exciting place. But that's the same thing that we're hoping to bring with this building. Something where you look at it, it retains the historic. Image and connection to what is an incredibly historic town. But also some newness, something exciting, something that you look at and we all say, hey. What's going on in there, I I that would look like a fun place to be. And it adds synergy to what's already a synergistic place in the historic district of Breckenridge. So too with the tower. The the tower that Suzanne designed, that our our goal there was to have a rooftop. Facility that adds elegance and a great experience, because in the summertime, especially in the afternoons and early evenings. To be able to have leisure activity here in Breckenridge on that rooftop. With what is undoubtedly going to be a spectacular view of our ski slopes. Is incredibly special. But to access it from the outdoors is almost not going to happen. I mean, I see these kinds of things, if you have the lift and you have the outdoor stairwell. Probably no one will go up there. When it's inside. And it's part of the building and the energy of the of what's going on, you can imagine if you yourself were there. You'd likely walk up the steps or you take the elevator if you're elderly or you have a disability to get there. But if not, and you're gonna have to walk outside or you have to put your wheelchair onto a lift or get onto a lift to get up there, or you're not gonna, you're just not gonna go. So to create that synergy and to create that special thing. That are it kind of already exists with this tiny little RMU building, but probably not the greatest, highest, best use. For the property. We wanted to create the greatest, highest, best use for the property. And add the synergy to an already synergistic place. So that's my pitch for you, I appreciate your time and looking at all this and helping us do something special for the town of Breckenridge. I I trust that you give your time to this town and and to this commission that. You know, you love it the way that I do and that my family does and our children do, so. God bless all you and thank you very much.
I still have this question for Suzanne.
Questions for the applicants?
I'll stand back up.
So thank you for the information you provided, it was. I'd like to further discuss. Or ask questions on the. Front glazing.
Okay.
And Suzanne, you did a nice job pointing out what's happening at the street level and that there's no plinth, there's no steps. On this, and so.
Great.
Perhaps you have the difference in the same size, the kickplate the same size, but effectively.
The glazing.
Delta's been taken up with glazing. And in the case of your rendering, acknowledge it's preliminary, but it's a it appears to be a rather thin aluminum molyan. More like a a commercial storefront. And so my question to you is, is there a way to adjust that glazing to perhaps add a little plinth? Below the kickplate to better conform with the design standards and be more compatible with the adjacent historic buildings?
Sure, yeah, I think I, you know, I think we could do that, I don't think we want to raise it all the way to. Maybe it's somewhere in between, I don't know. Yeah.
My sense is if you had an eight inch or so plinth below the kickplate.
Sure.
And maybe the kickplate was a little taller.
Yeah, because we could have stepped that out and it could be a nice detail, I agree with that.
And your molins were a little beef years, I'm I'm fine with them being aluminum, but.
Yeah.
But they would be more in scale with the traditional wood, I think that would be much more compatible, and I think those are minor tweaks, but collectively improve your elevation.
Thank you.
And that was a question.
Oh, I know, I I agree with you, I think it's, I would, I would be fine with that. I I just don't want it to get so high that if he has a restaurant in the space or something that the people can't really see out or some, you know, that it's awkward.
No, we agree.
Okay.
And it's a good design.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Chair.
Suzanne, I have one question about the parking spots in the back.
Yeah.
Since they're double, excuse me. Since they're double spots and there is no egress. In the front, you know, closest to the building. I'm just curious about how you think that's gonna work, you know, if if. If people who don't know each other park in the front and the back. How that's gonna operate?
I mean, I think Sarah maybe could answer this, but I think it's employees are parking there and but.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's, I mean. Probably the use would be employee parking or perhaps a handicap spot if they were inclined. Our code allows for the tandem parking like that. One, one tandem spot, not more, so. I I don't see an issue with the parking being tandem because it probably would be tenant or employee use, not for the guest.
Okay, appreciate that.
Alan, do you have a question for the applicant?
No, no questions, I. Appreciate the extensive renderings and stuff, it's very helpful.
Thanks, Alan.
Lane, do you have?
I do not, you've already answered all mine, it looks like a fun place.
Thank you.
Ethan, do you have any questions?
No questions, Chair.
Suzanne, how much have you dug into? The building to the south and to the. The existing structure as far as historic fabric and what you're gonna find when you get that building out of there?
I am, we haven't, you know, because RMU's in operation there, but from. Um, but from the reviews from previous historic studies, it seems that most of the fabric is gone. So.
But do you think that that stone wall goes the length of the building to the south on their north wall?
I have no way. I have no idea.
Talking about the stone wall on the bar?
Uh, no, I, I think the, the building to the south of
Building to the south, there's a, you can see part of the stone wall. It's exposed at the front.
Yeah.
Do you think that goes to the back?
I think it does. It's a, RMU's back bar is that stone wall right now.
You can see it up above it.
So, so that's not really a party wall.
You're inside RMU and you look at the bar, there's a stone wall. That's the building.
So you're saying that that's not really a party wall?
Not if, uh, not if, it's just one single wall. It sounds like. I'm not sure how that works.
And with respect to the, to the gap that will exist between the new building and the old building, it's just about four feet, if I recall. And this, I think question could also go to staff. People are going to walk through there to the back. They are, because that's what people will do. Would, would the would a, like a little metal fence to prevent people walking through there be allowed downtown? Four foot.
I mean, you see gates and stuff in those gaps and I don't know.
I don't think you want
Allowed, I think the one spot we did allow was at, um, Skinny Winter and the building, the other historic building, there was a gap from the rear. And the owner was having issues with people coming in there and doing whatever in that little gap. And kind of, and so I think we did allow a gate to block that off to prevent people from going in there. That's obviously a lot less visible than this would be from the street. But I think there could be some design solution that we could work out to close it. Cause you know, I think when you're looking at this, it's a little narrow to have as a, a public easement through there. Um, it looks, it looks like Julia might have some more to add on.
Skinny Winter across the street has had a lot of problems with that, um, illegal activity and things going on in that gap. So, um, it's kind of definitely probably should be addressed during the design phase.
From the staff perspective, we felt it was better to have one side that was wide rather than two sides that were two feet each. So.
I'm clearly okay, okay with it. I'm just saying, I don't think it should become a place where people can walk through because they will walk through.
Right. Yeah. Makes sense.
And then I think you're, you're always very good about this Suzanne, but as you tear into this building and you start to find some historic fabric that's inside, what already exists there. If you can keep it and either repurpose it somewhere else or repurpose it on the interior, then this will go back to the owner. Do you expect this to be a single commercial business inside this building or is it going to have sub-tenants?
So I'm not quite a hundred percent sure what to expect, but I do know this and this is the most I know at the moment. We've been negotiating with RMU that they have expressed an interest in taking the whole building as a tenant. So the, I, they want both. I, I don't know how or why, but maybe they don't want to keep the building to the always messes up to the north, that that's temporary while we do the construction and they would move their business into our building. But they're very interested as a tenant. Um, I know that it's, it's such a great spot for us. We have a list already, a waiting list of other tenants that have wanted to approach us and, and have that property since we, we took it. Um, back in twenty fifteen or sixteen. So it would be best for us to have one tenant, in my opinion. But that, you know, business circumstances will dictate that, I think. But at the moment, just to be direct to your question, RMU has been our number one primary opportunity for that building. And they've expressed interest in all of it.
But that being said, we aren't designing the floor plans for them at this point. So we're just guessing.
Or the door between the two buildings.
Right. No, no. Yeah. And the liquor license is a big problem in the town of Breck. We can't do that. So it's not possible.
And I don't know if this will ease your concern or not, but about eight, nine months ago, I got a letter from an attorney who was representing somebody that fell down the steps at RMU, a steep stairwell. We don't have a steep stairwell. And I knew right away it was probably not our property. But I was, uh, we, we have to, I, I do that type of work. I'm a liability lawyer and I, I I confirmed that it was not my building. It was the building next door. The last thing I would want is to create havoc for ourselves that we open that door. You see, that, that doesn't contain my liability, that expands my liability. It's the last thing that I want.
Any other questions for the applicant? I'm going to follow up a little bit with, with Mike. And I wonder if we could go back to rendering from the front of the building. Did you give any thought to making the second story windows simpler? Uh, more like the buildings on either side?
So the building to the
My, sorry. Um, molins and mountains going through the windows?
As far as not having the crosses?
Yeah.
Oh, no, but we could certainly look at that. And the building to the left, just as far as the scale of the windows, that's not a historic building. And the windows to the right are a little smaller than normal, but the proportions are historic. Like the building to the south is more like the historic proportion, more vertical. But that wasn't your question. So.
Yeah.
But yeah, we'll look at that for sure.
Just the, the detail on the front. There's a lot of detail with the parapet and a lot of detail between the two floors.
Well, I think my clients would like that if we got rid of some of the detail on the windows. Cause they would rather have more open windows, plain.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
Anything further for the applicants? Open this up to any further commission discussions about this project?
A public comment?
Public. Is there any public comment? Anybody on the phone, Sarah?
No.
And since we have an empty room, there's no, nobody here to publicly.
Oh wait, there is one phone call in person that just jumped on. So. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine to unmute yourself. I, I only say this because they just popped up. So.
Is there anyone there?
They didn't, they didn't unmute or anything. So I think we can move on. Thanks.
All right. Since there's no public comment, um, any further commission, um, comments or discussion? Susan, do you have any?
No.
Mike?
Um, just, I think there's some questions at the end of the memo. Is that correct? And so we should probably want answers to those. Susan, thank you.
Would you like me to summarize the questions before everybody goes or you got it?
I count or you count?
Before you do, I have a question about the waving of points. If we wave the points, does that mean you won't have the EV chargers in the back? Cause it makes your points. So you have three chargers for positive three points? Okay.
And if you're looking, the questions are on page sixteen.
I do sort of have an amendment to the questions based on something that Suzanne said. If you could say whether you agree with, um, removing the points and she suggested that the building could be even taller. Um, would you agree with her suggestion on that as well, if that's appropriate? Thanks.
Okay. So just to clarify with regards to the points, we discussed the, um, fact that thirty feet was allowed. Twenty-seven is what I believe is proposed with these drawings. Suzanne commented that she would prefer that the front, um, parapet align with the parapet of the windows of, of the building to the right and the left.
Which I think is in twenty-nine feet approximately. Okay.
Okay. So what are we saying here? That, that they would, we would waive the points so they could do both of those things or one of those? What, what are we saying?
It would be whether you agree with both or none or one.
You would not assign two negative?
That was the original question. If we, if you would agree with waving the points for the two negative points that they currently get for twenty-seven feet. But then Suzanne posed that the building should really align with the existing heights of the two buildings, north and south. And that would be at twenty-nine feet, which would be negative four points, I think, under the code. So, um, if you would mind weighing in on, uh, whether you agree with, with that question or not. And sorry to throw a wrench into the process, but I think it should be addressed.
And Sarah, if, if it was raised higher, um, would that, that would still not get rid of the, um, visibility of the, the stair slash, uh, elevator?
The point waving would be a completely separate distinct question for the front cornice. Right then, does the rear elevator shaft meet the design standards?
Does, yeah, but I'm asking whether if, if it was raised, if, if the parapet was raised, would that lock out?
It would certainly obscure it to some level, but not in addition.
Completely.
I
But, but it would still be a different building form than what we've, um, seen within the district. So from a visibility standpoint, it already, it probably isn't super visible. Like if you're directly in front of the building on the sidewalk, but just the concern also from the alley in this overall is it's just not a, um, a roof form that was both there historically, as well as even in contemporary buildings within the district.
I have a dumb question then. Is it absolutely off the table getting this elevator so people can get up there because of our codes?
Well, I think based on precedent from, uh, the building to the north, we basically told them. They had to really design that both for their egress and stair towers or their, I guess, lack of stair tower. Actually having a sunken stairway into their building as well as having an exterior uncovered lift, uh, to meet ADA. Um, so that we do have precedent from that one instance and basically the same question. And to say that, um, design standards, um, so two eleven and two twelve um, are met with this design, we'd go contrary to the, the precedent from that application.
So they proposed and that, and there's a big tower like that and with the wrapping stairwell around it.
Yeah. It, it would have been much easier for them as well to, to do this con, this concept. And it was, um, based on those standards.
If I remember correctly, that stair element was in the front of the building, not in the back. Is that, am I wrong there?
I think it was, I think it was in the back as well.
But they ended up, I think with one of inside, inside.
I'm struggling with this. Um, that this, like the applicant has, has said, the, the stair tower slash elevator tower is essential to, uh, their design for the roof deck. I see that. I also see that Suzanne's point about you won't be able to see it from Main Street, period. You won't see it. So I think that's a, a moot point to even bring that up. There's no way you'll see it. Um, you'll see it from the back. I'm also struggling though with, and I understand that Georgia Square was built prior to nineteen ninety-two. But it is so prominent directly across the street. I, I'm looking for a way to, to give them this tower and I, I don't know. I'm looking at the priority standards and, 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 and I agree that, that as written, it's, uh, it, it doesn't meet those prior, those priority policies. Also, I'm a little confused about policies in that. It says priority policies and then it talks about absolute standards. What's the difference there?
A priority policy from the handbook is an absolute standard. So they must meet those priority policies.
Okay. So anyway, I just thought I'd throw that out there. Um, and I, I gotta keep coming back to Georgia Square because that to me is just so prominent. It's like, but it's right across the street. Um, and front and center. I don't know where I'm going with that. I just thought, thought I'd throw that out there.
I look at that non-conforming as something we don't want to do. It's a good example of what we shouldn't see.
I agree with that, Mike. Um, but we wouldn't see this.
Is it blocking anyone's view from behind? Isn't the parking garage up behind that too? It just seems like this is a really big building. Maybe we can do a size exemption. You know, it's got a bigger deck. Going to attract older people.
Chair, if we could, I think if we could, um, start going back and this has been a good dialogue, but the we could, um, go back to Susan again and kind of get comments from each of you. That would be helpful.
I'm still confused, Mark, about what we're saying about the points being waived with respect to the thirty feet or the present twenty-seven feet. Which are we dealing with?
If, if you could answer whether you agree with waving points for the current twenty-seven feet.
Okay.
And then if you agree with waving points for the higher twenty-nine feet.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the points waived would be two points for the twenty-seven and four points for the thirty. Is that?
I think it's approximately four points. I'd have to.
And, and I think specifically, what's the design standard that says that the roof line should meet the neighboring buildings? And that would be specifically why there would be the potential for waving points is because there's a design standard that basically is encouraging a design that's not achievable under, under the development code without accruing negative points, if that makes sense.
So that's, uh, design standards eighty-one and eighty-three, which, uh, recommend maintain the alignment that's created by nearby heights of primary roofs and height should be similar to heights found historically. Thanks.
Okay. One more question. Is there, is there a standard or criteria that says that, that elevator tower cannot be thirty-four feet, not be four feet above? Or seven feet above?
Way the height is measured for the elevator tower, it's actually only twenty-eight feet because you would measure to grade on the rear.
Okay.
So it's twenty-eight feet and, um, currently it does not comply, would get a negative, um, two, two or three points. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. That helps.
If, yes.
And there, there is also an exemption under the code for elevator towers, but that's typically only been applied outside of the district because we've never been in the situation for, um, the tower, because we've always said that they don't really comply with our roof designs within the district.
All right. Just to clear, clarify everything, why don't you go over all the questions? Answering here.
Yes, so under question one, if the commission could state whether they agree with waiving the negative two points for the current proposed height of twenty-seven feet for the front cornice.
Okay, Sarah, can we just, we'll have you read the question and we'll get the the points from each person and then we'll go back to the next question if we can do it that way this time. Will that work?
If you'd like to do it that way, Mark, we usually just go through them all, but given that we're changing kind of the questions, maybe that's helpful.
I I think that's helpful. Yep.
And then come back to Commissioner comments after we answer the questions?
Sure. Yes. So Susan?
Yeah, the last question is, do you have comments? So we'll get there. Thank you.
Uh, yes, so as to question, I'll call it one A. The way that Sarah has described it, I'm okay with waving points up to twenty-seven feet. Is that it? Okay. Yeah.
Mike? I'm not okay with waving it because I think we have the standard or or height limitation for a purpose.
I agree with Mike. I'm not okay with waving it. I think I think the legal standard would be the most restrictive standard, which is the twenty-five feet. And waiving the points on this project would, in my opinion, create bad precedent up and down Main Street for other projects that may follow this. So I am opposed to waiving the points.
Ethan? I'm in support of waiving the points. I think that based on the heights as it as as it pertains to building on either side, it makes sense. So I'm supporting of waiving those two points.
Elaine?
Agree with what Ethan said, so ditto. Think it should line up.
Alan?
I I don't support waiving the points. Actually, I find it interesting that we have in other projects, we try to get irregular roof lines. And here we're trying to get a consistent roof line, I think. I actually don't think there's an issue if the roof lines don't match up. So I don't support waiving the points.
And I'm I'm find myself torn between supporting the waiver, wa- waving of the points and the issue of the precedence here. And I think that this would be a better looking building if we allowed the points to be waived. But I also am sympathetic to the precedent that we're setting for other buildings on Main Street. So I think that in in lieu of that, I'm going to have to go with the precedent against my better judgment for the aesthetics of the building and say that I'm not in support of waiving the points.
One additional comment with respect to whether you waive the points or not. This project doesn't fail with those points in it. So I'm not sure why we would be incentivized to try to squeeze this project through and wave points here, which we would then have to do for every other project after this.
All right.
And the second question is, seeing as how no one would waive the points for the negative, the twenty-seven feet, we're not going to go to two B, eight, one B. So number two, does the commission support our assessment under design standard two twenty-eight concerning the steel cornice, barricade tree and architectural details?
Susan?
I am okay with the steel cornice and barricade tree, but I do have concerns about the architectural accents, if that's what we're calling these vertical elements. And I would prefer them to see, prefer to see them a deeper color that would not be so prominent.
Okay, but the question is about specifically about the steel?
Well, it says architectural accents too.
Okay. So that's a yes or no?
Uh, yes in part and no in part.
Steel, but you have issue with the vertical wood beams.
Correct.
Okay.
Mike? Um, thank you, Chair. So I think that the steel and accents are a bit heavy. Cornices are light and airy. There's a superposition of order and you've put a lot of black heavy steel up high. I would encourage you to lighten that up, especially with a off-white building. It will really punch and feel heavy. I don't mind the steel detailing in general. Thanks.
So that's a yes, but with condition?
It's a no, but it could readily be improved.
Okay.
Think I'm in agreement with Mike on this, that it is a little heavy and in some places excessive and could be simplified. So I don't dispute the analysis of the planning department as they look at it. And I think it's more of a preference for lightening up the the project, as I pointed out with the windows.
Ethan?
I'm going to echo what both Mike and Steve said. I I I like the accents, but I think I agree that they're a bit heavy and could be lightened up, but overall I like it.
I'm going to agree with Susan on the vertical white. That can be toned down a little. I'm also not fond of the aluminum clad windows. I think it should be wooden. This is a historic district. Little taller kick plate. And I'm not sure on the metal because I can't tell from the drawing, but maybe it is a little heavy, but I think it's cool too. That's it.
Alan?
Uh, yes, I I think it complies. I I think the rendering is showing a lot more contrast than we'll probably see in in the actual building unless they go back to the purple paint that they have in the existing structure, so.
Okay, and I I do concur with the staff's opinion on the steel.
Okay, and question number three is, is the commission supportive of the preliminary point analysis that staff proposed? Just quickly, that's negative two for the roof height. Positive three for the EV chargers and negative one for the proposed three hundred ten square feet of paving and then the project fails policies two eleven, two twelve and two nineteen.
Susan?
I agree with that analysis.
Mike?
I would add the previously noted. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. I would add the previously noted that the parapet is heavy in materials and I couldn't find that in the point analysis. Because you didn't, you didn't assign a negative to it.
Uh, so that would be a design, design standard, so it wouldn't be negative points if it's a priority standard and you think it should fail. Then it would fail.
Okay. So then I would agree with your point analysis.
Okay.
And thank you.
No problem.
Steve?
As the passing point analysis at that point includes the two points for the height. I agree with the point analysis.
Ethan?
So I previously stated that I was in support of 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 waiving those two points. So I guess that my answer would be no, I support the two fewer points. That makes sense.
Yeah.
And I am the same as him.
Alan?
Uh, I support the point analysis and since Sarah said also that we're this question addresses the absolute policy about the elevator tower. I I'm I don't know if it's really in our purview to waive an absolute policy for this. So I I support, I do support the analysis and the failure due to the elevator tower. Particularly since it's for a function that the historical buildings weren't designed for in the historic district, which is the roof decks. So I would, if it really isn't our purview to waive an absolute policy, I would not be comfortable doing that. I think we'd have to go to town council anyway.
Thank you. And and I do support the point analysis.
Thanks, everyone. And the final is a final comments.
Susan?
Uh, no additional comment.
Mike?
Chair, my previously noted discussion with Suzanne that the first four glazing should be reduced in height through larger mullions, taller base kick plate or adding a plinth below the kick plate to reduce the overall glazing height. Thank you.
Steve?
Despite us being critical of a lot of picky little things, I do want to say that I think this is a very nice project and I think you've worked really hard to get here. I'm always, I continue to be frustrated after the first RMU project with the rooftop bar, which I disagreed with, but I'm not a policymaker, so it didn't violate any design standards and that's the way it goes. I think that the elevator is a difficult issue because if you really want the rooftop bars, you gotta get people up there and I think that's a policy decision. I was a little disappointed that the council didn't confront rooftop bars in general in the downtown district when RMU went through. But that's a comment that has nothing to do with this. I think if precedent is anything, he's and Suzanne will go away from this and come back with some changes that we'll all be really happy with. I'm not sure if you're asking us tonight if this is ready for a final, if you're going to move that way or do we need a new preliminary to talk about the elevator and see where we stand with that? Just throwing that out.
Ethan? Yeah, I guess I was just the comment. It seems like from your your comments on the point analysis, it seems like you agree that the elevator needs to be redesigned. And but just with, I guess precedent of another elevator design out there, it does comply. And the the lack of other items and really having a otherwise passing point analysis, it seems like it would be ready for a final if you were, if you were comfortable.
So Chris, to clarify what you just said about the elevator being redesigned, needs to be redesigned for the ADA because we're we're saying that the two point, the negative two point is is okay. So what are we saying about redesigning the elevator?
Well, we're saying that the roof form at the current elevator shaft doesn't comply with design standards two eleven and two twelve.
Okay.
And then.
The absolute policy.
Absolutely, exactly.
Well, I really like the building and I'd really love to see that elevator work for you guys, but it is an absolute policy. And I don't see a way around that. Other than that, I think it's a beautiful building. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, it looks like a really nice building. I have no further comments.
Alan?
Uh, I think it's a great project. I I shared my comments about the elevator, which I I kind of concur with Ethan and Stephen. And of course, Stephen always says it much more eloquently than I can, so.
Thank you. I I think this is a pretty exciting building. It's a representation in a more contemporary form using some contemporary elements that reflect the historical nature of Breckenridge, and I think it makes a great statement in that direction. I hope that you can resolve the issue with the elevator and make this happen.
So are we generally comfortable just coming back to final then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that. So I thi- think we have the consent calendar now and the first one is the Soul Center.
Thank you, Mark. Before we get into this, I just want to disclose that I am on the board of directors for FERC and my husband preceded me for many years on the board of FERC and has also been extensively involved in raising money for this capital project. We have no financial interest, of course, but I did feel that I needed to disclose our relationship with FERC.
And I'll just, I'll just note here that really what we're presenting tonight is just a subdivision to accommodate a site-specific development permit that was already approved as a town project. And this is really, in some ways, just so the town can retain a larger part of the site for its own interest and then give a smaller portion to the FERC.
Is there any commissioner issues with what Susan just disclosed or?
No.
No.
Thank you. And just for clarification, these are actually, these next two items are town project hearings.
All right, well, good evening. Chris Coolidge, planning manager for the record. I'll try and move quickly so Alan can enjoy his trip. I appreciate you staying up at this late hour to join us this evening. So we do have the the Soul Center subdivision town project hearing. It's a proposal to divide the existing tracks A one, C one, lot one and the McCain subdivision to create a lot, lot one, which is a point eight one five acre site for the Soul Center development. And then create a lot two that's a remnant parcel of three point seven seven four acres for the town's future needs. As you recall, the Soul Center was approved last July, July twelfth, specifically by the town council as a town project. The site shows in the approved McCain master plan that this is for a nonprofit or institutional use, which is consistent with the Soul Center development. Uh, the site also has no existing vegetation and previously had a a ground or a a pond that was a non-natural, non-water fed pond that has been filled in. So we are not concerned with any disruption of natural features for this property. Drainage, storm sewers and flood prevention is being provided through the Alta Verity Two development as well as the development of the Soul Center itself. There is a off-site common stop or stormwater detention facility in the adjacent Alta Verity Two development. In regards to lot dimensions and configuration, the proposal matches what is shown in the master plan and what was approved on the Soul Center town project site specific approval. The blocks are designed to be in compliance with the McCain master plan. And then access, circulation, control and safety of street traffic is met by the approved development projects of Alta Verity Two and the Soul Center. Bicycle and pedestrian circulation is provided via connection. Bi- bicycle and pedestrian circulation um, is provided via connection to the Blue River Rec Path, which is provided via easements that are through the Alta Verity 2 development. And the new sidewalks are proposed along paddle road, drift road, rapid drive and McCain Road. Uh, this served the site and the new subdivision that through the Alta Verity 2 project. No new streets are proposed or required with the subdivision. And then finally, the dedication of parklands, open space and recreational sites has been met because originally when the McCain property, which this subdivision was previously part of, was purchased, one third of the cost of purchasing McCain property was paid for by the Open Space Fund. In the master plan, it shows that there's a total of seventy eight point five acres of open space that will be retained, which exceeds the required ten percent open space dedication under the subdivision code. Uh, we finally note that uh, the proposed Lot 1 is consistent with the site programming requirements that of the Soul Center as approved through the, the Town Project last July, and we did provide an overlay as an exhibit in the packet. Um, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions related to this, the subdivision that is uh, being reviewed as a town project. Thanks.
Uh, Susan, do you have any questions for?
No, I have no questions.
Mike, do you have any questions here? Good. Um, Steve?
Chris, we, we worked with this issue of meandering subdivision lines with respect to the North Gondola Lot and the whole development there. I'm wondering if there's something we want to articulate in the findings about the reason why this is such a meandering subdivision lot line, just to kind of protect future precedent?
Yeah, I think we could add that a, a couple of different ways, and that's actually probably a good, you know, I know that in the staff report, it's consistent with both the the master plan, which is a amendment we did make last fall to the, because of that exact issue that you bring up with the Gondola lots. And then also we have an approved um, site-specific development permit, so we can make a finding related to that. And I think in addition to those two items, it is a town project, so we actually do have the ability to wave the magic wand, cause um, you know, looking at the overlay, which I'll throw up real quick here. Shrink this down or zoom out. You can see that where we have the kind of weird jog here really follows um, kind of the center of the dry, the access. And uh, you know, we show that the required parking is met. You know, below kind of that jog and then on one half of it. And really the intent is, you know, as the town develops this further in the future to retain um, you know, some of the site over here to the west where there's better uh, soil for development where it's not on top of the fill. So that jog preserves that. And then also just having the access from the um, access. So we just, as the town is able to just retain more land and the, and the Soul Center gets what they need for their development.
I agree completely, and I, I just think that's a, another good reason to put in the findings uh, that it is a town project and it does preserve uh, a maximum amount of additional land for future development.
Okay. Would you be comfortable if we just worked on a, a, a finding to present to the Town Council that's kind of based on those parameters?
Yes.
Without, without reading it into the record tonight?
Absolutely.
Thanks, Steve.
Ethan? Questions? Fine.
No questions.
Alan?
No questions.
And I have no questions.
All right, well, um, yeah, since it's, it's a hearing, um, we're uh, required to take public comment. Um, so I, we should probably open that up. And then we do have a recommendation after that of your, you to recommend to the, the Town Council.
Okay. As this is a public hearing, are there any members of the public who wish to comment? Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you are attending by phone and then press star six to unmute yourself.
No comments.
Nobody there. Okay. Then we will close this public hearing. And we will open up for commissioner comments. Susan, do you have any commissioner comments?
I don't.
Mike?
Um, I support it.
Yeah? Steve?
I support the plan as well.
Ethan?
I am supportive of the plan.
Elaine?
I'm supportive of the plan.
Alan?
I support the plan.
And I support the plan.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion then.
Okay.
That the Planning Commission recommend to the Town Council that the Soul Center subdivision of track D3 replat of tracks A1, C1 and Lot 1 of the McCain subdivision at 24 Rapids Drive, project PL 2023 dash zero one two zero be approved with the additional finding number eight outlining the conditions by which deviation from straight line subdivisions are appropriate for this project as determined by the Planning Department.
Do we hear a second?
Second?
Okay. Um, so this is um, this is a done deal.
Okay, take a vote then. Mr. Lees?
Yes.
Ms. Gart?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Mr. Giller?
Yes.
Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
At this point, I'm going to hand over the chairmanship to Mike. And um, I am going to recuse myself from the next project. I have no financial connection. My connection is that my daughter is the uh, project manager of Town Projects and uh, it's been a little bit too much drama for me this week, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you. Use myself as well.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Stillson Track, also this known as the Stables Village Resubdivision. And this is the town project with Sarah Crump. Sarah?
Good evening. I'm Sarah Crump, planner two for the record, and this is a Town Project Hearing. Um, tonight before you is the resub, proposed resubdivision of the Stillson Patch Placer Track. This track is currently town-owned and the purpose of this resubdivision is to um, divide the existing thirty eight point eight acres into um, the, to meet the master plan prescribed for Stables Village. And this will allow the town to transfer tracks A through E to the developer Suzanne Allen Sabo and her development company um, for the uh, construction of the different phases of Stables Village. Tracks F, G and H will remain um, under the town ownership and track with tracks G and H preserved as open space and track F continuing um, to be used for governmental purposes such as um, public storage, snow storage and solar array. Uh, the proposed subdivision provides for easements for snow storage, right of way, um, as well as a new recreation path that will uh, be placed along the stables uh, right of way from north to south. I want to point out that the um, line that denotes the easement for the recreation path is a little bit, uh, it narrows in some places and widens in others. This was um, preferred by engineering, the existing line on the uh, proposed plat follows one foot to the west of the existing bike path that is out there currently. And then in the future, the bike path will be integrated into the stables row as that is, right of way as that is improved. So that is the distinction and reason for the uh, varying width of that easement along Stables Drive. I also noted in the staff report that the names for the right of way Stallion Loop and Bridle Alley were yet to be confirmed. I did receive a notification from the town's GIS specialist uh, just after this report was published that the county has approved those names. So um, on the plaque going forward and next week with the Town Council hearing, if approved tonight and for recommendation, uh, those names will move forward as the official right of way names. A similar um, finding or uh, notation for this subdivision as the last one. Um, the code section nine dash two dash four dash five of the subdivision standards was amended last fall and it um, to allow for curved, curvilinear tract lines in the case of the plat following the um, master plan for a subdivision, and that's the case here. The eight point four acres of tracks A, B, C, D, E all um, follow the master plan. And so it meets that standard uh, um, noted in the staff report. And that is everything that I have to point out specifically, but I'm happy to take questions um, during this hearing.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah? Elaine?
No.
Eve?
Are you willing to add a finding consistent with the one from the last hearing that states why you're allowed to deviate?
Sure. It follows the, the code, but yes.
It follows the code and, and that's why.
Absolutely. We could, should we need to read that into the record or can we just copy what?
Just exactly like the last hearing.
Okay, perfect.
To, we'll work together tomorrow to get, to come up with a consistent one for both applications.
Thanks.
Susan, any questions?
No questions.
And I have no questions.
And Alan?
Alan, any questions?
Nope. I've just uh, commented that I'm jealous that they get to name their alley and we can't do that in Wellington and Lincoln Park.
All right. We open this up for public comment. I presume there's no applicant.
No comments.
Okay. Um, public comment is closed. Okay. Commissioner comments. Elaine?
I have no comments.
Eve? None.
None.
Um, I have no comments.
And Alan.
Oh, Alan.
I made my comment. I'm good.
I have no comments.
And accordingly, I have a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Great.
I recommend that the Planning Commission, I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Town Council that the Stillson Track Stables Village Resubdivision, TR 6-77 of Section 31, Cor. 4 of the mining claims containing thirty eight point eight six eight acres known as the Stillson Patch Placer Myrtle Annie Load MS number one four six six at seven ten Wellington Road. Project number PL twenty dash twenty three dash zero one three five be approved with the addition of additional finding number eight as to why this project conforms with Section nine dash two dash four dash five.
Second.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, I have a motion in a second. They have roll call.
Mr. Giller?
Yes.
Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra? Mr. Lees? Ms. Gart?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
All right, passes five zero.
Thanks, everyone.
Nice work, Sarah.
Thank you.
Town Council report?
On council report.
When do we start working out there?
Soon, really soon. Soon we have our infrastructure permit.
All right, I'll run into that. First off, I want to um, full marks to Alan. It's got to be approaching three in the morning in Morocco. Am I not re- correct?
Uh, yeah, we're getting there.
Wow.
Alan, I'm glad that this worked.
Yeah.
Sounds fine. It's fine. Hey, you know, I created this, I created this for myself.
Um, so the council on uh, May ninth had several items that they discussed. Um, the rent program, renewable energy mitigation program for outdoor energy use that was um, discussed with council. Um, and they have directed us to move to um, start first reading on that. So that'll be happening in June, on June thirteenth. We intend to come back and I'm going to give you guys an update at the first June meeting prior to that on changes to thirty three R, kind of what's in our, you know, what's in the code, um, the development code. A lot of this is going to be in the building code in terms of the mitigation in that, but there are a number of things. Uh, most interestingly at the last um, meeting is um, the, the council suggested a couple of things. They, they wanted to uh, assign points quicker in terms of when square footage, certain amounts got um, exceeded for outdoor heated space. But also um, they wanted to provide, provide an incentive for full electrification where you didn't bring gas to the house. So that's going to be something that we'll be um, providing to you as well for you guys to see.
I'm sorry, Mark. That was the, the, the council wants to provide. Could you say that again?
Incentives. So we're going to be looking at positive points for when someone says, hey, I'm going to do a development here. I'm not going to bring gas to that. Yeah, so. Um, it's all within, obviously, our climate action goals to get away from fossil fuels. So um, in addition to that, um, the Gondola Lots Development Agreement, which uh, Chris kind of explained to you last time, it was approved at second reading. So that'll take effect um, right before June thirteenth. We anticipate a long discussion, an open discussion at the Town Council regarding some new development proposal for the Gondola Lots and that will likely spill out onto other properties as well. So June thirteenth, um, their first council meeting in June. So anyway, um, yeah, and that's all. It would be in relation to probably a, a development agreement, a new development agreement. So anyway, more to come on that. So interesting times. There's also a um, the, the Father Di- Air Food Pantry Trailer. I think I described that previously, that, that was approved at first reading. And uh, off-street parking requirements, I believe you guys reviewed several meetings ago um, with Sarah has been approved. It, well, the council said, yes, let's go ahead and do first and second readings on that without any issues. Council also today had a retreat at Beaver Run Resort, so uh, myself and Julia were in attendance. Um, just, it was really kind of a high level of discussion on some things that they just can't get to a regular meeting, which is packed with all kinds of normal ag- agenda items. So they talked a lot about what are the, our current amenities that we provide for the community, visitors in the community, and do those need to be um, supplemented? Any things that we should be taking a look at? They also talked about our transit system and different options for different bus routes. And kind of visioning for the overall Riverwalk and the Riverwalk improvements. As you know, we kind of did a pilot last year where we put in new rec path on the Hundred Block North and along the river and some other, a few other things. Adjusted the, you know, one-way traffic in the alleyway, stuff like that. So anyway, we had that discussion. Some of the comments that came from the council were, I'll just go through my notes really quickly here. Beginner bike loop, we need, we need one. McCain might be a great place for one. There's hardly anything that's beginner in this. The Flumes is not a beginner trail for people that are coming from outside of the county. Riverwalk Center improvements. I think the original discussions, and this happened a number of years ago, was like the bathrooms, you know, everyone, you gotta go outside in the rain to go to the bathrooms and, you know, maybe more lobby space, stuff like that. They are talking about wanting maybe get a consultant to come in and help do some real visioning for that, whatever that might be. So maybe it could be, you know, even a huge overhaul of the whole Riverwalk. Don't know yet. Too early, the center. Too early to tell, but anyway, that's something they wanted to look at more. Childcare, they just want us to be careful about looking at our existing centers and capacity there before moving to the step of building a brand new center. There's some new centers coming online in other parts of the county. They're all really focusing on turfing some of our fields, like our ball, baseball fields like they did to the soccer and lacrosse field up on the north end of Kingdom Park. Largely due to water conservation. I mean, those things just use a ton of water. And it also extends the season a little bit, too. And then Carter Park Pavilion should be, there be some improvements there. The bathrooms are pretty rough, but there may be some other things they want to do there as well. You know, they talked a lot about hikes for families and family friendly zones. Looking at things like that that can be done in the community and Kelly very much pushing on stepping up sustainability efforts. So we actually meet our climate action goals, which we're going to have to get pretty aggressive about over the next few years. Housing, always a big issue. We want to start planning for Block eleven development. There's about seventeen acres remaining there south of where the Block eleven apartments are just built, the ones with the solar panels on them. And so that's something that's coming that will, our housing staff will be working on soon to start the process of doing some type of planning for that area. And also maybe reaching out to the school district. They've got land. We have resources to make housing happen. And it's just, they don't know, they haven't done housing projects, so they're really not, that's not their bailiwick. And then a lot of talk about enhancements to walkability, Main Street, Riverwalk once again, things like that. So I could go on and on, but overall, it was a pretty good discussion. There was a little bit of discussion about commissions and whether there should be term limits in terms of not, there already is, but like maybe commissioners only serve one four-year term. But the exception that was brought up was a planning commission where they felt that that, you know, it takes a while to get planning commissioners up to speed. So the re, the reason they were talking about in others is there's somewhat, you know, for BOSAC, they'll get eight, 10 applicants. And it's like they feel bad that they're letting all these people buy and it's like, well, you know, people aren't on for eight or 12 years. It gives more people a chance to, to get involved. So those are a few of the things that were discussed today. But anyway, it was a kind of a good visioning session. So. All right, Alan, did it put you to sleep?
No, no. The park's still open.
I'd like to do a shout out to Sarah who did a terrific job at the Ski Town Forum. Alan and I attended. It was quite interesting, as it always is. And our staff acquitted themselves very well in comparison to all the presentations. So Sarah, good job.
Yeah, Sarah.
And it, it's always interesting. We all have the same problems and the same issues and some unique features, but the thing that I was most interested in and, and found to be relevant to us, I think, coming up were the building into the hillsides and the different layers going up the hillsides and how they were defining floors and basements and it's coming here, you know, where we have those things. So it was, it was an interesting forum again. Like in the future, anybody that can, it's worth attending a couple of hours in the afternoon.
Yeah, it's interesting, actually, with the recent code revisions and location of mass and then really counting everything as density. If we're actually kind of ahead of that, there's, there's a maximum amount of density you can have in sight, whether it's above or below ground. We do have our, obviously our density caps above ground in in areas in the historic district, but we also have our total maximum underground. So in, in that regard, other than lots that have disturbance envelopes, which you just have unlimited density in general, I, I don't think that there's to be as much gaming of that in the future because of just kind of incidentally how we've already set up our code.
Yeah, I think Julia pointed that out a little bit, didn't you? And the, yeah. So, yeah, we are maybe just by accident to a certain extent ahead of the power curve that some of the other people have.
It also sounded like we count more floor area when it's partially exposed than some other districts do. They were just saying the majority is unexposed, it's underground, we're not counting it towards above ground, which I thought was really interesting. Yeah.
Is there an audio or video of the Ski Town Forum?
She said she would distribute it to those who attended, and I think then we could share it, but she wasn't going, it's not publicly available. We could ask for it.
I'll send it to you.
I was on a, I signed up, but I was on a plane.
It was at the end, someone asked.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Anyone else have anything else? Meeting adjourned. Good night.
Have fun.
Have a great time, Alan.
See you guys in a couple of weeks.
Okay.